I'd like to call the order of the August 18, 2015, meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, invite you to stand if you choose while Commissioner Sue Perigin provides her invocation and then leads a pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Laura, please provide this entire Assembly of Leaders the necessary guidance, wisdom, and courage to make the best possible decisions for our community now and in their futures. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
At our time for awards and recognitions, we've got a special award to present to our special friends of the cities, the, I think, people from the Kentucky League of Cities who's here to join us tonight, Brianna Carroll and J.D. Chaney have an award to present to the local legislator. Please sit forward.
We were sitting back there, Mayor, Commissioners, and esteemed manager and city clerk, deputy city manager, and city attorney, and finance director, debating. I was trying to get Brianna to do this, and she's back here. If you haven't met her, she's fairly new on the staff, been with us for a couple of years doing legislative lobbying, and she was the one that ran the point on a piece of legislation that your Senator Mike Wilson was able to get through the legislature this term. We had a lot of debate from cities around the state who discussed the issues they were having with what's commonly referred to as Internet sweepstakes cafes. And I know Bowling Green, you all saw and may still be seeing, I don't know what your status is, a lot of issues, but it was not unique to Bowling Green. It was in northern Kentucky. It was down in Middlesbrough. As other states closed in on their laws to make clear that it was prohibited gambling activity, we saw a rise in Kentucky and those types of establishments that went unregulated. And the Board of Directors at the league made clear that they wanted a clear path forward for law enforcement to be able to take action. Some municipal attorneys had opined that they were legal operations and would legally be able to operate. So when we get a divide in the municipal bar like that, it isn't coming upon the league to try to develop some consensus among elected officials about what the best policy path is for. And our board voted to, one, pursue an opinion of the Attorney General's office, but two, also talk to Senator Wilson about pursuing this legislation to make clear under Kentucky law that Internet sweepstakes cafes are, in fact, violative of the constitutional provision. Senator Wilson, it was their first opportunity to work with him directly on a bill that he sponsored. He's been consistently a champion of local control, home rule, and on those issues, on everything, consistently on the floor. And this was their first chance to be able to work with him on a piece of legislation that he was actually carrying. And it was a refreshing experience because you would have thought this simple little bill would have been really easy to get through the legislature. And whenever we say it's a simple bill, it's almost condemnation because you're going to find out that you're going to run into more roadblocks than you would ever want to see. And we did that. All of a sudden, the gambling folks that run amusement facilities for kids had issues with it. We had, the horse industry had issues with the language on it with regard to the way that was going to apply. But Senator Wilson was able to sit down, negotiate, work with those to clarify the bill, and we were able to accomplish our objective, including your Speaker, our Speaker Pro Tim, Jody Richards, who's also from Bowling Green, and be able to get the legislation through. So I'm here today to present Senator Mike Wilson with the 2015 Kentucky Friends of Cities Awards, and I hope you all will join me in congratulating him and thanking him for being a consistent champion for local governments in the Kentucky Legislature.
Well, I want to say thank you. First of all, you don't serve or do this to get awards, but when things happen in your community that were happening with these Internet sweepstakes cafe and your veterans' organizations come to you with their charitable gaming, down 40 percent as a result of it, and, you know, you begin to take notice of some things that really need to be changed and corrected. And it was interesting, as I began to investigate and start working on it, I got a call from Brianna Carroll, and she's here, though we couldn't persuade her, I guess, to come up and do the award today. But anyway, she used to work with us in the Senate, and she was championing this legislation for the League of Cities, and I was working on it for our community, and so we were able to combine forces to ensure that this could be the simple bill that turned out to be one that we really needed a lot of help in the House, and of course Jim DeCesare worked in his caucus, and Speaker Pro Tim, you know, Richards worked with his, and we were able to finally get it passed. And so shortly after that, I think they, Amy Milliken and also our Commonwealth attorney, they took care of it and shut them down. And so I'm very thankful for that, as a result of being able to sponsor this legislation. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to thank you again for coming down all the way to Bowling Green to make this presentation. I'm glad we're able to afford the opportunity, and thank you Senator Wilson for always being available to us any time that we call and working with us on all our issues. Appreciate that.
We're happy you remembered the award.
That's true.
You'll get the body bill, we'll have to turn around.
I understand. Be careful going back. Thanks again. All right. Next awards and recognition, Commissioner Hill.
I'd like to take this opportunity, I wish we could recognize them in person. Well, actually, I'm thankful we can't because they are in Williamsport, but we'd like to wish the 13 young men that are representing East Little League good luck in Williamsport, and their coaches, Rick Kelly, Paul Kilgus, and Tony Jackson. We appreciate their hard work. Congratulations on being the Kentucky State Champions and the Great Lakes Regional Champions. They're one of eight teams left in the United States still playing baseball, and then the eight international teams. So we wish them luck, invite everyone to tune in on Thursday at 6:00 PM and watch them on ESPN. Good luck, boys. We hope you bring back the trophy.
Thank you. Any other awards or recognitions? I believe Ms. Angie, you're up.
Good afternoon. I'm with Operation Pride. My name is Angie Alexiev, and for those of you who are not familiar with Operation Pride, we exist to promote enhancement projects to our community. We do that through community outreach, we do that through public recognition, we do that through maintenance of our corridors coming into our community. One of the things that we're most proud of is having the opportunity to recognize residents of the community, commercial business owners, as well as neighborhoods, that have enhanced their property in such a way that really exemplifies one of the reasons that Bowling Green is such a great place to live. So this month, I'm excited because we actually, this is the first time, we're actually presenting both the residential and the commercial Pride Awards to one person. So I would like to call Bruce Zachary up if I could. And, let's see if I can do this. Hot dog, I did it. Okay. The first property is the residential property at 1106 Adams Street, and on the left, you can see, that's the before picture. On the right is the after picture. So there's a huge difference there, and I know a lot of people know that because it's also right across the street from...
The old health department.
Thank you. So there was quite a significant investment in this, and would you like to say anything about that?
Well, we bought the property some years ago. Banks Crandall was the one who owned it before I did. He had it as a rental property. It backed up to our business. Banks built our business property back in 2001, and then later he came to me and asked me if I wanted to purchase this property. And he practically gave it to me. It was in disrepair, but it was a nice piece of property. And it had renters in it at the time who abused it pretty bad. And I kept the property, but I only let people I knew rent it from time to time, and then the last renter I had in there a while back just destroyed it so bad that I decided what I would do is just go in and gut it all the way down to the walls. And so what we did is we tore the face off of it, we tore the roof off of it, and then we brought it all the way down to the studs. And then we put new electric, we put new plumbing, we put new floors, and new bathroom, tile, and totally remodeled it, put a fence around it, and so you see that on the right there. Now, the cost of it, she asked me about the cost, and the cost really was, it's hard to put a figure on it, but probably somewhere in the neighborhood of around $80,000, you know, when you think about the remodel of it. And the cost of the property I bought from Banks years ago, hey, you probably know more about those figures than I did. I can't remember exactly what I bought it for, but I'm really proud of the way it is inside and out. The inside, to me, is a lot prettier than the outside. It's got a standing fireplace in it, working fireplace. I gutted all the walls, and so it stands alone, and it's a feature point in it, and it's really beautiful inside as well.
I was in that house.
Yeah. Walnut shelves and features in it. It's actually a great commercial property. Later, we decided to make it that way. It's beautiful.
I was in that property several times back when I was on the police department. I'd love to see what it looks like now.
A long time ago, when I was gutting it, I tore the wall out right next to the fireplace, and somebody had put pictures in there. And it was pictures of a bunch of guys sitting around drinking beer. And so, yeah, I bet you were there probably quite often.
It looks wonderful. It really does.
We appreciate it. We're proud.
Well, on behalf of Operation Pride and the entire community of Bowling Green, we are proud to present you with the August 2015 Residential Pride Award for 1106 Adams Street. Okay. And the commercial property is right around the corner from there. It's my fact, I think you were, oh, these are, I'm sorry, these are also after pictures of the residential property. Okay, here's the commercial property, which is 109 East 11th Street, which is B&amp;B Cleaning Company, which you guys have had for how long? It's a family business, right?
I established it in 1995.
And brought it, was that here, or did you bring it here?
Well, I started here.
Okay, you started here. Okay. And that one is, whoops, right there. Would you like to say something about that?
Well, again, Banks Crandall built this for me in 2001, and he built it pretty much how you see it there on the left. We, and we had it for several years. You can probably see the growth of the trees, the difference in the two pictures, but there on the left, it was just, it was a very good property, and it served us really well, but we just thought it needed something a little more to bring it up to date. So my brother and I, my brother Brad, who is the Vice President of the company, we decided that we were going to reface the building and also remodel the inside, and so over a period of time, we just brought everything up to date, took the awnings off the building. We wanted a new sign, and I was in here not too long ago, probably before y'all, when I wanted that new sign. Y'all had to approve that, and so we took the signage off the building, and then we put it out front and got approval from the Board here, and we really do appreciate that, that it does a lot for our business, as well as, I think, the appearance. The sign looks better out in the yard. But the same thing, if you wanted to put a figure on it, I think we put probably around $50,000 in remodeling that. And of course, we did the inside as well.
I learned to lay rock.
Yeah. Yeah, the stone, a lot of the stone, we had our friends come down from Nashville, really, is a great stonemason, does a lot of work for the stars down there, and he helped us and taught us how to lay stone. But I don't have much more to say about that property. It speaks for itself.
Inside is redone to the street.
Yeah.
Well, on behalf of Operation Pride and the City of Bowling Green, we are proud to present you with the August 2015 Operation Pride Commercial Pride Award for B&amp;B Cleaning Company.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Angie.
We appreciate the opportunity to present these.
Weren't you commenting to me earlier that this is the first time both residential and commercial is the same individual? That's wonderful. Thank you for your efforts to make our community look so nice. Good job. Thank you. Any other awards and recognitions? Mr. Sibbo, have any comments tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there'll be a need for an executive session. Katie will read the reason.
Pursuant to CARAS 61810C for discussions of proposed litigation against the City of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First items, approval of minutes for the special meeting on August 3, 2015, and the regular meeting on August 4, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. In our public comment section, I believe we have a presenter tonight, so come right on up, Nate.
Hey, Commissioners, how are you guys doing today?
Yes.
Is that fine?
Whatever you want to do.
All right. Before we start, I've prepared a video. I know I've spoken with many of you about my idea to redesign Bowling Green's flag. Perhaps you guys have a lot of questions, but this is a pretty good video that covers pretty much all elements of our campaign that we've been promoting. You may have heard something about a new Bowling Green flag, and I know what you're probably thinking, Bowling Green has a flag?
Well, here's the deal. Of the thousands of flags you see flying around town, only one is the current Bowling Green flag, which is kind of sad. We have such a great city, and we should be proud to be from it, live in it, or just play represent it. And if you're lucky, all three.
So why is there only one Bowling Green flag flying in the breeze? Well, like the majority of city flags, ours isn't very good. Here it is. Current Bowling Green Flag Assembly, our city seal on green flag. While nature of a great seal is not very effective in forth life, and here's one. City seal is meant to be printed on stationary things, such as paper, and have close ones placed. Seals are also meant to be single sided. A flag is meant to be printed on backwards, hiding it, black within the wind, visible on both sides. See, this is what happens when you have words or a seal on a flag. Half the time they're backwards, and you can't even see it.
As you already know, Bowling Green is pretty awesome, and we deserve a flag that will reflect that.
We deserve to have a symbol to rally behind.
Our current flag, it's okay, but if you were to make it into a sticker and put it on one of the city cars, it would look like a city parking pass.
The new Bowling Green flag counteracts that idea. On a car, it's easy to see and recognize. It looks fantastic flying in the sky. It even looks awesome on a golf cart in the lawn mower, too.
Our new flag design has the ability to be stitched onto a WKU graduate's backpack as he travels through Europe.
You can put this sticker on like your guitar case or even your guitar, and it actually looks cool.
And yet, no one may know what it is at first, but it'll catch on and turn into something very real and very fast. Ask the citizens of Chicago or Colorado about their flag, and you'll find they really can help a community thrive.
The Bowling Green flag is about to turn to life, and it's only been displayed in one place its entire life.
Our current flag has failed to be embraced by our citizens.
The harsh reality is, few people even know that Bowling Green has a flag. The new flag, however, in just three months, is being flown all over town, and dozens of local businesses and residences by people who want to see it become part of our community.
We've also gotten a request for stickers from four residents of Bowling Green, and we've shipped them to Louisville and Frankfurt, Nashville and Lexington, as well as Ohio, Indiana, California, and Oregon.
So now that I've introduced it, let's break down this new flag.
We started with a green background. It would be pretty silly to ignore the fact that we have green in the city's name, but on a more serious note, it represents our success by our cultural community, as well as our lush Kentucky landscape.
Concerning the stripes, the blue represents the banner, which is why we're all here. The gray stripe represents the on-end railway and I-65. These two major thoroughfares really helps forge our city. Sitting on top of those two stripes is the gold stripe. The gold represents the economic and cultural prosperity that Bowling Green has had since its foundation.
The three stripes are designed in a way to create a feeling of movement, growth, and ascension. Bowling Green, since its foundation, has done nothing but get bigger and better. This flag embodies those ideals.
I've said it before, and I'll say it again, Bowling Green deserves a great flag that follows the right design principles, and also it should be distinctive. If you look at the Bowling Green flag on these flags, well, it doesn't stand out of the crowd at all. Bowling Green is so much better than that.
In my daily life, as I try to market Bowling Green as a place to visit, we look to create a sense of place, and this flag can certainly do that.
Changing the flag may seem like a small thing, but the positive impact it has on the city could be huge. It shows everybody that you take pride in where you come from. I put it on my car, I'm glad I did.
Thanks for your time, and if you'd like a free sticker or two, just follow us on Facebook and we'll look you up, even if you look that far down the road.
All right. Well, I guess, you guys have any questions?
That was a great presentation. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you very much. I was up till 4:30 in the morning last night.
Is that a drone flying?
Yeah. We've got a lot of really cool shots. Bowling Green is beautiful, especially from the air.
I knew you were coming tonight, so I brought something special, so you know where we've been.
Okay.
Just so you know, this was, this was the city's flag up until about 20 years ago.
Oh, man.
And Ms. Ward helped me remember, or helped me find it, that this was the city Bowling Green's flag for, I don't know...
They're definitely literal with it.
I don't know if you remember, was there a contest, Joe?
I don't know.
You probably drew it back then, didn't you? I wanted to show that, so people know what we had in the beginning and where we are now, so.
Thank you so much for bringing that.
I didn't send it to you, though, didn't I?
Yeah, I know. I love it. It's fantastic.
Did I understand you that you have forwarded copies of, or the color that you're showing us for Bowling Green to other locations?
Yeah, actually, I displayed, I started promoting that video today, and now three more states have asked for it, and then one person who came by and got some stickers actually told me that he'd sent one to Texas and New York, just because he had friends and family that had moved away, and said, "You guys should have this. This is awesome." Also, I forgot Washington and Illinois. It was up at 4:30 in the morning. I'm a little delirious.
I guess my concern is, we would have to put a, have a patent or something to show that it's only Bowling Green, Kentucky's flag. I mean, we don't want the same color down in Oakmont, Tennessee.
Well, we already kind of have that problem with the current flag. The 25 flags that I found up there to put with the Bowling Green flag, and while some of them aren't the same shades, that took me less than an hour. When you have a flag and it's owned by the city, we're, we won't run into that problem.
Any other comments or questions?
We won't run into a problem of another city having the same colored flag?
No, sir. For instance, Russia and France have the same exact flag, only reversed, and there's no issue.
I guess I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't want somebody else having my flag. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
I feel that way, too, which is exactly why I bring up the point that a lot of cities, unfortunately, just put their seal on a flag. And, you know, there are a lot of reasons that it shouldn't happen. A flag's not always flying, so sometimes you can't read it. Obviously, sometimes it's backwards, which is an issue. We should look unique, and I believe that this design helps to alleviate the problem of us looking too similar to other flags that are already around. There's a book that I got for you guys, actually, I didn't even get it. The guy who wrote it, and arguably, it's a pamphlet, but nevertheless, this guy works as a flag designer. He works for the National Association of Vexilologists, which is a fancy word for flag design, and he actually found out about our project and sent them to us just because he believed in it. And there are these things called Ted Talks. I don't know if you guys get to see any of them, but Roman Mars, a very popular designer, just recently did one a few months ago about why city flags are often so bad, and it's a very enjoyable 15 minutes. There's a lot of information, and there's some good design, and he's a funny guy, he's kind of quirky, so there's a few laughs. It's a great way to, it's a great video to watch.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And nice work on the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Very good. I actually have this sticker on my Yeti.
There's no better cooler.
Right. That's how I identify mine. Didn't the Convention and Visor, I noticed Marissa Smith there, the Convention and Visor's Bureau just hire a guy out of Nashville, he was a WKU grad, to redesign our branding effort for all of Bowling Green, for tourism and identity, to give us a brand? Is that something that we might want to tie into as we...
That's a very good question, and I don't necessarily have an answer for it. All the time, flags are different from branding initiatives. For instance, Louisville used to have a great flag, and then they had the Metro join, and they changed it to a seal on something. And it fits their branding, but it's not, it's not good. If, I believe I can partially answer your question. If it would lead to us updating the flag in any way, I'm still for it. I'm promoting this design. It's already being loved by many people, which is great, but the most important thing is that I think we should have a flag that at least reflects who we are. We're growing, we're a great city. And other cities, you know, when you go to Chicago, you're going to see that flag flying around, and it has nothing to do with the branding of the city at all. People, firefighters and policemen, if they're killed in the line of duty, very often in Chicago, they actually put the Chicago flag over the casket. It's a real, it hits home with the community. It's easy for people to grow, as you see with Colorado, they had cornhole boards and this and that, and it's something that somebody could make on their own if they wanted to. If somebody was going to do that with the current flag, it'd take days and days to perfectly do it. Simplicity is a very important facet of flag design. But that's a great question.
Any comments or questions? Nate, we appreciate you showing that to us.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right, now we'll get into the regular agenda. I have the second reading of ordinance BG 2015-21.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.18 acre from LI, Light Industrial, to RS-1D, Single Family Residential, located at 928 Boat Landing Road, presently owned by Banks and Patricia Crandall.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. This is the second reading of a rezoning ordinance we discussed last week. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-22.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.2022 acre from RM4, Multifamily Residential, to GB, General Business, located at 1320 Center Street, presently owned by Dean and Ann Donegan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is also a second reading of a rezon, and are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-23.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to amend Subchapter 2511 related to nepotism as recommended by the Board of Ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is also a second reading of a one-word change to the ordinance. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-146.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of J. Ryan Meredith to the position of firefighter in the fire department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Mr. Febow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Meredith formerly served the city as a fireman, fell by differing calling to God and his fellow man, and left city service and went to work with youth. He has now thought about the importance of coming back to work for us, and we always need certified firemen. So we're here tonight to ask you to return Mr. Meredith to employment as a firefighter with the city. It's our understanding that his reinduction would have a minor learning curve. The fire chief is here, as well as Mike, if you have any questions.
I notice he's a little grayer than the last time he was around.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Congratulations, Ryan. Welcome back. You're supposed to stand up so he can take your picture back there. I'm sorry. Everybody knows who we're doing stuff to here tonight. Thank you. Municipal Order 2015-147.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Thomas G. Kinman to the position of police officer in the police department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning. Mr. Febow.
We started another police class in March. We had 98 applicants. Five made it to the interview process through the various requirements that we have. We hired two certified officers who were already trained in July, and we're here tonight to ask you to appoint Mr. Kinman, who went through the process and is being recommended by the police department. Mike Grubbs is here. If you have any questions about the procurement process.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Kinman, we'll invite you to stand, so we can tell everybody who you are as well. Congratulations. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-148.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Richard Blake Briscoe, Beth Helsley, and Connie Pittman to the Bowling Green Community Tree Advisory Board.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. This is a reappointment of three individuals who've given their time to the Tree Advisory Board, keep our Tree City USA designation going on 21 years, I believe it is. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-149.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Dharma Shah to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is an appointment recommended from the Convention and Visitors Bureau to be the hotel motel representative from that association, replacing the uninspired term of Tim Nip. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-150.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-01 for Sloan Convention Center pipe and drape from Drapes for Show Incorporated of Sylmar, California, in the amount of $30,044.50.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Denning. Mr. Febow.
In our attempt to continue to make the convention center look new and functional, we went out to bid for drapes and a thing called piping, which is the accent to the drapes. We had 27 people show interest in this bid, but only one submitted a bid. We feel the bid is reasonable, and we recommend approval. Mike Grubbs, the executive director of the convention center, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-151.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the purchase of tasers and related accessories for the police department from Gulf State Distributors of Montgomery, Alabama, in the amount of $30,498.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
As most people know, police departments today are outfitted with tasers to use in non-lethal situations. Tasers have a lifespan of about seven, 10 years. Showing due diligence, we try to replace those. And being sensitive to our budgetary needs, put them on a three-year replacement cycle. We're here tonight to ask you to implement year two of the replacement cycle and authorize the purchase of 30 new tasers from the sole source Gulf State Distributors in Montgomery, Alabama. Doug's here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-152.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the city of Bowling Green, the Bowling Green Waring County Planning Commission, and the Kentucky Heritage Council regarding continued designation of the city of Bowling Green as a certified local government.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Mr. Febow.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of us know, the city of Bowling Green is a certified local government by, for historical preservation. We are here tonight to reauthorize a memorandum of understanding involving three parties: the city, and the planning commission, and the Kentucky Heritage Council. In your packet is a new understanding between the three agencies, how historical preservation will work. There's been a number of principal changes at both the state level and local level, and the mayor and others felt it was important to redefine our relationship. Gene's available if you want a point-by-point or a broad overview, or the mayor can add his input.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2015-26.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 2.70 acres from PUD, planned unit development, to RS-1D, single-family residential, located at Chipewa Drive, presently owned by D&amp;D Contracting Group Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
Yeah, I would ask Steve Hunter to make a presentation, if you all have any questions.
I just have one quick question. Why going from PUD to RM3?
Pretty easy question, pretty easy answer. Steve Hunter, planning commission. D&amp;D contract, what they did is, the first development was a PUD, which you have to do to do attached single-family development or patio homes. So a portion of that development are patio homes, and there's actually a patio home homeowners association. D&amp;D is going back to a more traditional, single-family detached product on this side of the street. Even the original development allowed some flexibility, but they wanted to make sure to just do traditional RS-1D, single-family development as opposed to patio homes. And there was no opposition, not to the planning commission.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Binding elements that are in there mirror the size and style of the patio homes. They're just gonna be a detached product instead of an attached product.
I understand. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-153.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of various streets in Graystone subdivision, Section 10.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
Thank you, Mayor. As the commission knows, we, from time to time, accept into the city maintenance domain various subdivisions that are completed pursuant to our regulations. We're here tonight to ask you to accept Section X of the Graystone subdivision. This essentially involves 700 linear feet of roadway and impertinence. Jeff, Lashley, and Melissa, Cansler, are here. If you have any questions about why we're accepting this or what our requirements are.
Mr. Denning.
Just one question. Does this development tie into the blacktopping project we had a year or so ago that the citizens were complaining about?
Joe, are you asking about McClellan?
Yes.
This is separated by some distance between that, so you have to go off of McClellan through a portion of the subdivision to get to Section 10 of this subdivision.
So I assume by us accepting those roads, those streets, they're in line, meet all of our specifications and so?
Yes, sir.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Anything else?
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-154.
Municipal Order approving the Small House Road widening project and authorizing the city law department to negotiate the purchase of properties necessary for this project, and further authorizing appropriate city officials to execute deeds, easements, and other documents related to land purchases necessary for the project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning.
Second. It has been a priority of this commission, and once before that, to try to effectuate new roadways or relieve traffic in the city by doing at least one significant project. Our significant project this year is Small House Road widening. Anyone who travels on Small House Road and comes up to Campbell Lane knows there's a lot of queuing during heavy traffic times. City aware of that, has designed a two-phase project to address that and make queuing lanes. We're here tonight to ask you to give us permission to go out and to negotiate and purchase, if necessary, easements and other pieces of land to allow that plan to go forward. Melissa Cansler, our city engineer, is here. If you have any questions.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Cansler?
Looking forward to this. Thank you, sir. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Welkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-27.
Ordinance naming street. Ordinance approving the naming of an unnamed alley connecting East 7th Avenue to East 8th Avenue between Chestnut Street and Park Street to BG 262 Alley.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
What does the BG 262 mean?
What a great question. I think Melinda's gonna answer that for us here.
It's the Bowling Green Marathon that track has been doing for several years, and it is a preliminary race, or a qualifying race, I'm sorry, for the Boston Marathon. They couldn't use 26.2 for 911 calls, so they had to take the decimal out. But it's just to give them more recognition for this race they bring to Bowling Green.
Oh, I just wanted to add that Lily Wheat submitted a request that we rename this. A little while ago, we heard about a new flag. It's, those two, that flag and this are pretty similar. There was a father of modern advertising, Marshall McLuhan, said the medium is the message. So in this case, the medium is the road, and we want to use the road to advertise that we have a marathon in the community. So every time people travel on that road, it'll be, that medium will become the message we're trying to get across. Jeff has looked at this, and so has 911. And as Melinda said, this is gonna help sell the marathon to the public. We recommend your approval.
So every time we have a marathon, we gonna give it a BG number?
26.2, I guess, is the length of the race. 26 miles and 2 tenths of a mile, I guess. And everybody who's familiar with running marathons knows that number. We wanted to use 26.2, but that created a problem for our 911 folks in addressing. So I guess there was a compromise in which the number 262, even though it was imperfect, still served the purpose of using the road as a medium to advance the marathon.
And this alley did not have a name?
Didn't have a name, yeah. It's unusual request, but it's creatively unusual.
Creatively unusual.
I guess as creative as I vote on it.